I would like, if y'all would, to stand and introduce yourselves. Put them on the spot.
I'm Abby Hardman. My sister is Lexie Hardman, so something about her. And my mom teaches at the elementary school, so.
I'm Elizabeth Downs, I'm a senior at Pickens High School.
I'm Greta Pearson, I'm a junior at Pickens High School.
I'm Kayla Jett, I'm a senior at Pickens High School.
Well, thank you. It's good to have leadership, this is youth leadership. And we've got two more, or three more. Young man, come on in. You're on camera, by the way. Don't sit down. I want y'all to introduce yourselves. You can come in.
I'm Sam Barber.
All right. What grade you in, Sam?
Eleven.
Even eleventh, junior.
I'm Andrew, I'm in 11th grade, Andrew Olson.
All right.
I'm Blue Goodman, I'm in 10th grade.
It's good to have y'all here, and I'd like to welcome you to youth leadership here. Here's the wood, because I stand for only fair, but go ahead.
Our kind gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the privileges we have, coming together and doing the work that you would have us do. Bless those sick and afflicted. In thy name we pray, amen.
Amen. While we're standing, let's all pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All right. Item number three, we have some amendments to the agenda. Under addition, under the consent agenda, item E2. Item E2. And under new business, item A3.
You're still looking at one.
Yeah, I'm still looking at one. Yeah. We under three. Item 10. Item David himself hit for a proclamation, and then item F, and then under item F. Can I get a move to approve those amendments to the agenda?
So moved.
Have a move and a second for the discussion. None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That brings us down to item number four, the approval of the agenda. May I get a move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a move and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. At this time, we go to item number five, under employee recognition. Normally, this is on Ms. Denny. Denny operates. She's got two of the employees that are not here out for training, but she has got two, I think, that hopefully will be here.
Thank you. We are very proud of our attorney colleagues, so it's always fun and my honor to give out the service awards. I don't see Jennifer Jordan. Okay. Betty Jones, no. And Betty is with elections, the election office, and she's been with us 20 years, so thank you, Betty. Betty, Betty. And I don't see John Nicholson tonight.
He's in training.
Okay.
He's out in town.
All right, Angela Allen, probation. Angela's been with us 10 years. Barbara Bryant, 10 years, road department, she's out sick.
She's out sick.
The important one.
The important one. The one for 20 years. That's a big deal.
That helps.
Now, with item five, employee recognition, that brings us down to number six, under finance report. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fay Harper.
Okay, so this is the finance report for the period ending March 31st. That's three months of our 2016 fiscal year, and the expenditure budgets should be at 25% or less. We'll start with the revenue. The total revenue collected through March 31st was $3,185,326, and that's 13.37% of our total revenue budget. For, under general government functions, the expenditures are $631,018, and that is 20%. One function on that, the general government buildings is slightly over, it's at 26.8. We've been doing some renovations on the building just across the way that hopefully is going to be a rental, and also on the EOC building. And so that's why that's over budget just a little bit. We'll go to the judicial. And the judicial expenditures so far are $645,637, and that's 19.03%. Under public safety, total expenditures are $2,535,531, and that's 20.86. And the variance on there is the EMA budget, which is due to the COGREIT amount that we pay in January each year. It's a large proportion of that budget. But overall, public safety is under budget. Okay, now we'll go to public works. And their expenditures are $614,438, that's 21.97%. The health department, the senior center, and the MATS program, expenditures were $139,309, which is 17.63%. Under culture and recreation, the expenditures are $173,595, and that's 18.69% of that budget. Under housing and development, the total spend is $124,488, and that's 20.5%. So overall, general fund expenditures through the end of March are $4,864,18, and that is 20.42%. So that is, it's a little bit more than 4.5% under budget, which is very good for this time of year. The enterprise funds, for the water department, their expenditures are $226,902, which is 10.98%. The airport is $90,172, and that's 24%. And line item budgets and reports went out to the department heads and elected officials on April the 14th, and I have all those if you would like to review them at any time. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fay. All right, Ms. Dever, that brings us down to item number seven, under consent agenda. Item A, on the consent agenda. We signed the National Donate Life Month proclamation. That was through LifeLink. Number B, we signed the Child Abuse Awareness Month proclamation. That is for, has to happen on the first day of April 26th, the month of April. All right, item C, we signed the Sexual Assault Awareness Proclamation. And D, we signed the Health Fair Proclamation. And then E, we signed a service agreement for operation of Pickens County Transportation, which is the MATS bus between Pickens County Board of Commissioners and the North George Community Action, Incorporated. And this is that contract here. Did y'all get a copy of the contract? I'm going to read that tonight before you go to bed, let me sleep.
They probably already did.
Yes. All right, Ms. Dever, that brings us down to item number eight, under old business. Dever, do we have any old bids?
None.
All right, that brings us under item nine, new business, Recreation Department and Drink Vendors. Seth, I'm going to turn it over to you. You'll give them two a heads up on what you and Mr. Jones, Brian Jones, is taking care of down at the rec center on regard to drinks.
Yes. As of May 31st, our current contract with the drink vendor, which is Coca-Cola Enterprise Enz, we have been doing some due diligence, Brian and myself. We've been looking at Pepsi and Coca-Cola. We've gotten proposals from both. And Pepsi has come in, and they have given us a better proposal. They have offered us lower prices, more services, more vending machines throughout the park, so we can better serve the public. And they have offered us a better rebate system that will in turn bring the county some more money on commission. Within that, we're currently with Coke. When we talk to them, they've offered a three-year contract again, and we were looking for a one-year contract. And Pepsi has offered us a one-year contract as well. So Brian and myself's recommendation would just, to be, if we could move with Pepsi, we would prefer to do that.
And the contract that you have now runs out May 31st?
May 31st. And we can roll out with either vendor, whatever the board's decision is. We can continue on June 1st, or start with Coke, or start with Pepsi on June 1st as well.
And they're going to maintain the machines and keep them full, or do y'all have to do that?
They are full service, except for what we order for the concession stand. We'll stock the concession stand and sell, but all of the vending machines are full service by Pepsi. They do all the upkeep, maintenance, stock, and then they will write the county a check for all the commissions.
The signs and all that are out there around the park and in the Recreation Center, be changed out at no expense, or is the county going to have some money in that?
If we change those out, under the old contract, years ago Coke donated those scoreboards. Recreation Department now owns the scoreboards. Pepsi of L.J. said that they would completely put all the, they would take Pepsi, their signs, and put them on all the scoreboards, and all the signs throughout the park at no cost to us. They would do that from the Pepsi and L.J.
Any other questions for Mr. Seth? All right, and I guess we would like to go ahead, since the contract runs out May 31st, to go ahead and vote on this this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right. Only thing I see that needs to be changed is the agreement start date and the agreement end date. I don't see if there's anything else that will be a problem. Can you put an amendment to that, or do we need to go back and? Okay. All right. Mr. Lam says he can fix that denim on the start date, finish date on this thing, to get it synchronized with our fiscal year policy. And I don't think it'll be an issue with Pepsi with the fiscal year policy of the county to match up if the dates came out on here.
Yes, sir.
That being said, I need a move and a second to go ahead and approve for the signature of this contract. Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, thank you, Seth. Right under item 10, action items, A, approve the minutes. Item number one, regular board meeting, March 17th, 2016. Need a move and a second to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a move and a second to approve those minutes. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And then item number two, the work session on April 7th, 2016. Need a move and a second to approve those minutes to that meeting.
So moved.
Move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item, under item B, under rezon request. We have a rezon request, RZ-02-16-119. Eddie Goodwin submitted an application for rezon 5.13 acres, a property located on Gibson Trail Jasper, Georgia. The 5.13 acres is surveyed portion of existing larger tract of 28.75 acres of land. The smaller surveyed portion is adjacent to the Gibson Trail Road frontage. The current use listed for the total is 28.75 acres in agriculture. Mr. Goodwin, Godwin Goodwin would like to rezon. The surveyed portion of this property, 5.13 acres of small agriculture, which is S.A., to this smaller area would conform with the land use codes and could be subdivided from the larger parent parcel, 039-025, if approved. The intent is for Mr. Goodwin to build a single-family residence for his future home. A public hearing was held on the 11th of April, 2016, regarding the application to Pickens County Commissioners Meeting Room for the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and the public, Pickens County Planning Commission voted seven yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on this 5.13 acre parcel contained on this tax map. All right, I need a move and a second to, since they approved, I need a move and a second to approve or deny. How do y'all want it?
So moved.
So moved.
Move to approve? All right, have a move and a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. It has been approved. All right. That brings us down to item number two, under B, on the rezon of the RZ-03-16-1196. Pickens County Canton Road Jasper, Pickens County Service District, submitted an application to correct zoning based on the identified commercial tract of wild timber subdivision from the 2006 final plat. The property is 5.13 acres also, how is that? Located in the north corner of the intersection of Canton Road and Wally Crossroads, Jasper, Georgia. The current use listed for the property is suburban residential. Pickens County would like to correct the zoning for the identified commercial tract for final plat recording in 2006. In addition to the final plat county status found documentation noting that when this 5.13 acres tract was split off of wild timber subdivision in 2006, it was requested by the then-property owner to be listed for highway business. If approved for HB use district, the intent for the property is to be utilized as commercial. A public hearing was held on April 11th regarding the application in the Pickens County Planning Commission's meeting room for the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report stating that the staff had no obligations, and listening to the testimony from staff and the public, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to deny the rezon request of the 5.13 acre parcel contained on tax map, 065-002-003. All right, they voted five yes and zero no to deny the request of that particular parcel. I need a move and a second to approve or deny.
Move to follow the commissioners' recommendations.
And that would be to deny, okay.
Can I ask a question about you?
Sure.
Is that, does that back up to wild timber property?
It does.
And it's on 05?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a move and a second to deny. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Is that on sign? All right. That brings us down to item number three, under payment contract. We opened the bids on Friday, April 8th, 2016, at 1 o'clock this week, 1:49. We had three companies that did the bidding, that did the bidders. One of them, C.W. Matthews, both had a bond. The amount of his bid was $896,824.5. Next company we had bid on the project was Blount, or Blunt, however you want to pronounce it, B-L-O-U-N-T. Bond was yes, he had a bond. His bid amount was $831,248. And then the next bid under that was Johnson Paving. Did have a bond, and his amount was $735,748.94. We have got these bid packages here, if y'all review them, but they have been reviewed. And pretty well, Johnson Paving, we've used all three companies in the past, but Johnson Paving's coming a little bitter. And this is in regard to, let's see, item number one, North Station Street. Number two, South Station Street. Number three, North Railroad Street. Number four, South Railroad Street. Number five, Spruce Pine Street. Number six, Cameron Way. Seven, Rabbit Town Road. Eight, Stargill Street. Nine, Tressle Road. Ten, Newtown Road. Eleven, Plinck Road. Twelve, Christian Avenue. Thirteen, Prince Street. Fourteen, Fitz Road. Fifteen, Coward Mountain Road. Sixteen, Bruce Drive. Seventeen, Bluebird Trail. Eighteen, Sparrow Lane. Nineteen, Brown Thrasher Court. Twenty, Oriole Trace. And those are the roads that were being bid upon. I need a move and a second to approve for Johnson Paving to get the bid package for that project area. As far as what we're going to be doing, what are we going to be paying for? Right now, this is what we're subbing out to do around, that's Tate, Coward Mountain, and oh, there's Coward Mountain, Fitz Road, and Bruce Drive up off of Cove Road. The county, we're fixing to bring our equipment, and we're starting back on Henderson Mountain. Want to finish Henderson Mountain Road, because that was a three-phase project. We want to finish Henderson Mountain, and then we're going to try to catch the, resurfacing the edge of Pettit Road. That's got surface on it now that's in really bad shape, but we have the equipment there. Finish up Henderson Mountain, hit Pettit, then we're moving the equipment over to Federal, Old Federal, and, I'm sorry, Lawson Federal and Fortner Road. And try to get those finished up.
Is this the latest in our citizens group prioritize?
It was in the master five, six-year plan when we started your year before last, on how we're going to do it, weather permitting, to try to get these projects done in certain areas. Granted, I'd love to pay everybody's street that year, but you can't do it. We have to break them down in five-year intervals.
What about Cove Road? Obviously, I get a lot of calls about Cove Road.
Cove Road is in it, but the structure of Cove Road at this time, even though the sides are breaking off just a little, is in better shape than these roads, or some other roads we're going to get to before Cove Road. I've got it, and we've had, we monitor them along with the DOT engineer that comes over and helps us with these, to help monitor the roads, and we try to catch them up as quick as we can. That's why we're going back, and even though the county's going to be using our equipment on the bigger roads, we're subbing out some of the small ones to get the process going. These particular roads here, some of these haven't been touched in 53 years. So they're all invented, all broken down.
Against Tate, isn't it?
Yeah, no, we're not that. But they're roads in dire need of.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to accept Johnson Paving.
Second. Have a move and a second to accept Johnson Paving. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Now.
The D is the one that was on the slip of paper to delete. That will, I'll do some research on that.
Yeah, we were going to talk about the fee schedule revision request, but we had some items come up that we want to tweak in on those fee revisions, so Richard has asked us to postpone that until he has a little more time to look at that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We can table that motion there if y'all so desire. Now, that brings us down to item E, upgrade to access control system. Ms. Fay, is it? This access control system, if y'all have paperwork on that. Access control system is the group of companies, especially one break of the, we can get into these buildings here and into the courtroom for key fobs and our scan pads. The company that originally put them in are still in business, but the computer software, everything that handles that equipment is no longer available and cannot be upgraded. So we're in the, we're going to have to do an upgrade to that system. So these are the prices for the upgrade of the access control. There's two different items here. We can either go wired system or wireless readers. Now, the wiring that we've got is what's called a Cat 5 system, that we've got already pre-wired on all this stuff. So a lot of the wiring is already in. They just replace the units themselves and the computer setup the way it's set up. Wireless readers, they're going to run, looks like about $80 more, thereabout. So it's a, it's a headless on that. Yeah, wait, look at that.
Upkeep and all for the wired system.
Right now, if anything goes down, we have no way to repair it, because nobody offers that old equipment anymore. Anything that gets over five years old is, you have to mercy. So I guess what I'm asking, I need a move and a second to approve to go ahead with the upgrade to the access control system. Which will be, either we can go wired or wireless readers, whichever one. About $80 difference, maybe $8 bucks difference. It all depends on what they say. Hardwires are better, but if it's to a point where you can't get any wiring to it, it has to be replaced and I go with the wireless. It depends, you know either or. All right, need a move and a second to approve that.
So moved.
Have a move and a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of the number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Item F, vote on the CASA continuing grant proposals. Diane, you want to explain to the other two commissioners what?
I will. And also, and thank y'all for not being able to do this. I think y'all know that we actually save our counties about a billion dollars a year with the fact that our volunteers are actually our guardian in lives for our children that are in foster care. So what I did is I put together our last 10 years and some graphs, so you can see exactly what we're doing. We have right now, currently, 77 volunteers. Our numbers, lady. Court point of special advocates, we actually serve as a guardian in lives and the voice of the child in court. And we're autonomous from DFAX, our Department of Family Children Services, but they're partners with us for the children that we're serving. The good thing is our CASA volunteers do see those children more often because DFAX is overloaded, as we know. And frankly, we are now. We've taken in more and more children. Since the 1st of the year, we have averaged a child coming into court care each day since 1st of the year. We have eight children, and I'm talking about our judicial circuit, not just Pickens County. I want to thank y'all for the fact that y'all have been our fiscal agent for our program, and that helps out tremendously. The grant that I'm asking for continuation on is our Promoting Safe and Stable Grant. It's a federal grant. It's administered through Department of Human Services. We've been receiving this funding since 2002. It's not really a continuation grant, because each year it's new. Each year I have to write a new grant proposal. Last year, since they cut the maximum that you could ask for in federal money, I wrote two grants. I pulled our family drug court grant out and had to write two grants to have the same amount of money. One of the good things about this grant is they're good about paying. We do submit monthly reports, and then they in turn reimburse us. So the grants will be, the maximum on the big grant is $75,000. Cash match is 25%. Cash match is 25%. And the smaller grant will be around $45,000.
Who does, who does the cash match, does it divide up between all three counties?
Yes, it is. It's divided up between all three counties and then towards CASA portion with the rest of.
Is there any, is there any increase in the cash match from last year to this year? And have the other, other commissioners from the other county said anything about it?
No, and we haven't asked for an increase in over 12 years, so it's, it's remained the same amount.
Thank you for participating.
Oh, you're welcome. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate. It's not Diane Skoggins, it's program. So anyway, it's helpful for me to see it too. Do y'all have any questions?
You do a great service. Thank you very much.
It's our volunteers that do the, do the job that they do. So if you see a CASA volunteer, please thank them. And also, we are continuously recruiting. We're training seven, seven people now. But for the first time since I've been working with CASA, we have 31 cases that we don't have signed because we don't have enough volunteers. We, some of our volunteers have three cases. So we're doing CASA orientations right now. We just did one in Dickman and one in Blue Ridge and one in L.J. So we will have a new training class that will start June 6th. And we train four times a year, and we're, we're, we're now looking at a flex training where if somebody can't, if they work full-time and can't come to 40 hours of classroom training, then we are trying to figure out how we can get that educational component in. And then they have to have 10 hours of courtroom observation. They have to be screened and trained, and then they're sworn in as officers of the court. So it's not like being a soccer mom.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for the explanation. Pickens County handles a lot of, lots of grants, as we, we're both aware of. We're just trying to, want to get these other commissioners involved in how this, how this process works and what we have to do with, because Pickens County has to, wants to front the money up, to work with the other two counties on that part. So I need a, a move in a second. Do y'all have any issues with that, or have any other questions? All right, I need a move in a second to approve. We need to go ahead and re-sign that grant for another year.
So moved.
A move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, let number saying aye? None opposed, thank you, Diane. And thank you for coming down.
And you don't mind, but we have the Appalachian Children's Center telephone is going on on ETC 3. So it's from 6 to 9 tonight, so.
I'd rather be there than where I'm.
I know, I hear where you're going. And thank you. If I can answer any questions, I'll be glad to.
Thank you, Diane. All right, that brings us down to item number 11, Guests and Comments. So anybody got any comments? Mark, we always have a comment. Yes, Mark?
Just a couple of questions. On the paving that you approved, approximately how many miles are those roads that you mentioned?
I can't remember. John, we can get them for you Monday. John Licksen had all those miles, we had to turn them in, and it's not on the, it's not on the bid package.
It's on the, the tonnage of asphalt on.
Yeah, I could see some others. Well, what they do, they really don't concern themselves with the miles, they do with the tonnage of the asphalt. And John, but Mr. Lickerson has got the, has got that, and that's where the, that's where the pricing comes in, is the tonnage of it. Now, why they do it that way, that's the way they did it last year that way. Don't worry about the miles, it's the tonnage of the asphalt that they use. And I guess it makes it separate for some of the roads, like around here, 12, 12 feet wide, some of them are 24 feet wide.
Okay, so that makes a big difference.
Yeah, well. Any further?
If nobody else is going to say anything, yeah. On the access control system upgrade, is, do you have approximate cost of what that would be?
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I thought I.
No, you didn't, you said, you mentioned cost, and then you didn't mention the number.
It was, for the wired unit was $6,113.95. For the wireless readers was $6,194.97.
That's not bad at all.
All right. Yes, sir.
One more quick comment.
Three strikes, you have.
This is my third strike, but you introduced all the youth leadership, and then when we were finished with the pledge of allegiance, there was one fellow that snuck in late that I like to see. You know, they can all point a mind to us, get up and introduce themselves.
Well, I was afraid you was going to think you was the one in youth leadership.
No, I don't.
Young man, get up, introduce yourself. Sorry to miss you.
Hello, I'm Wesley Shelfman.
What rate are you in?
12.
12.
Thanks for being here.
And where you going to school at?
Get us on stage.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further comments? Mark, what do you got?
Alex, you got it. I know, I know where we're going after this, so.
Oh, wait. Well, young, young men and women, I want to thank y'all for being here. This is Progress Office 70.
Yep, I'm just calling you in here.
Yeah, that's probably, that's okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank y'all for coming. Y'all have a safe weekend, and be safe and careful. You kids be careful going home. Thank you for being here.